Okay, please turn your microphones on, pull them forward, we'll get started. Welcome to the July 25th, 2022 meeting of the Town and Niskuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpeno.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Strang.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes, the minutes from the July 11th, 2022 meeting. There was a revision to those minutes that came out this morning. If you didn't have an opportunity to take a look at those, you want to table those, we can have a motion to table. If you want to go forward, I'm ready to go forward with the minutes. The changes did not impact any of the decisions or direction on any of the applicants from the last meeting. It was strictly typographical and spelling and just a cleanup. Do we have a motion one way or another? Motion? Motion to approve the minutes from the July 11th, 22 meeting by Mr. Scrubby Tennis. So I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Strang. Any discussion at all? Pretty straightforward, okay? Okay, all those in favor approve the minutes from July 11th signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none opposed, the minutes of July 11th meeting are approved. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move to privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in Town and Niskuna, please come into the microphone, state your name and address for the record. So privilege of the floor is open. And I see we have no one here. Laura, do we have anybody online or any communications?
No online or emails.
Okay. Hearing or hearing for no one or seeing anyone, we'll close privilege of the floor and we have no unfinished or new business tonight. So we'll move right to discussion items. We have two discussion items tonight. The first discussion item being Empire Drive Sketch Plan Application for a Minor Two-Lot Subdivision into two separate lots. First lot being 1.83 acres and the second being 2 acres. 2 acres, we have the applicant here and we had some discussion last time, so I'll appreciate it, you guys bring us up to speed and we'll talk about it.
I'm always supposed to...
You need to use the microphone.
I'm always supposed to work CT mail and those applicant is your Robert Drummond. Since the last time, the discussion was centered around the what to do with the driveway in and it was made clear last time that the driveway, the shared driveway like what is shown on the screen right now was not the preferred or it wasn't something that the board necessarily wanted to see, so that we were asked to do two additional sketches, plans. So we have the next one. That's the one with a more of a traditional cul-de-sac and that would have, I assumed that would be a public road at that point where town would have to take care of it. And then there was a discussion about the next sketch, which was, you know, two road, two separate driveways that come apart as soon as they get off the public right away. The other items that were talked about were some utility items that the applicant has worked with the town and we've shown him on a plan that's extending the water line to the edge of the property with a new fire hydrant, right where the driveways would come off. And also we show two separate sanitary laterals going to that manhole right in the center of the stub road. The other things that's shown on this plan is a snow plowing area alongside of the road and a little bit on next to the adjacent to each driveway. You know, so we're looking at pushing this option forward and, you know, we want to know...
Yeah, we need to use the microphones.
We're here to answer any questions you may have if the applicant has anything to add.
No.
I do not, I don't have anything else to add. The separation of the two driveways, so it's not a conjoined driveway, it would be better for the customers and not doing a cul-de-sac would be better for the town and for myself if they only have to deal with 30-foot frontage of snow. Everybody gets a snowbank in front of their house when they plow anyway. Instead of building a cul-de-sac, which would be a 300-foot circumference road, that they would still have to deal with the same amount of snow in front of their driveways.
Yeah, and we have the email from the highway superintendent that states that he prefers this option, didn't want to accept the roads that go along with a cul-de-sac. I mean, I like cul-de-sac, but, I mean, you know, we work with the input that we receive.
They were not interested in a cul-de-sac and my meetings with the building inspector and the planning, Laura Robertson yielded kind of not an interest in putting the cul-de-sac in there and it takes up a huge amount of the property. It has to sacrifice a quarter of an acre just to put the cul-de-sac in.
Yeah, they might need, with this design, you know, they might need a little bit of an area to be able to, you know, do a K-turn or whatever, you know, at the house, but that'll be up to, I guess, to the individual homeowner when they build their driveway, I guess, that'd be a detail. But at least this keeps the shared driveway and have independence, so, you know, they don't get into issues of who's plowing or having a shared plowing contract or whatever, they each have their own during control, so, which I like, so. Any thoughts from the board regarding the updated submittals?
I think this is an improvement over the original option. I have a concern and...
Make sure you pull your microphone forward, please.
I do have a concern and I believe there's, I believe the site has the potential for further subdevelopment and I don't think this design addresses that. If that's totally off the table and we can get that in writing, I'm okay with it, but if there is an intent to ever put additional houses up, because they are large lots, then I'm not happy with this.
They are large lots, however, they're long and thin. If you have to put a cul-de-sac in there, there'll be four lots and we could get 100-foot frontage on four lots, then we'd have to put a cul-de-sac in and long, thin lots, we have to keep the house width to a minimum because of the frontage and because of the setbacks on both the sides, so that doesn't quite work well. So it's not really to our advantage to subdivide into more. I know they're large lots, but they're fully treed right now and nobody needs to cut the trees and I imagine the neighbors on Empire Drive would love to have the tree buffer between them and the new homes.
Yeah, there wouldn't be an opportunity to future subdivide because you have to have 15 feet of improved road frontage in order to create a buildable lot and this is essentially sucking up all of the improved road frontage, so you wouldn't be able to get in two more lots on this one after it was subdivided.
Unless somebody came in at a later time and decided to upgrade the way in enough that they could provide roadway.
But if we were to...
You'd have to take the two homes down.
Yeah, if we approved the subdivision, if he were to sell the two lots, if they would come in, if they want to do something different, they would have to come back to this board. So this is the proposal and, you know, unless somebody buys both the lots, I would expect it to stay the way that it's shown here, would be my anticipation.
Mrs. Gold, are you proposing that we, would you propose that we attach a condition to our approval requiring that they do not further subdivide these parcels?
We could, we've done that before, I don't see any problem doing that. I don't think the applicant would have a problem because that's not his intentions.
He's asking if I get approval, if I would like to subdivide.
No, if we were to, if we were to go forward with a resolution, we would have a condition that states no further subdivision of these lands.
Correct.
And that's what you're saying anyways, it's not your plan, so.
The plan is two lots.
Two lots. So it shouldn't be an issue.
With that, I'd be okay.
All right.
Could I ask, so you have about a 55, there's a 55-foot length driveway, just picking up where the chairman left off. That's a funny little K-turn because there's, you're not pulling into traffic, you have only one way out. Is there, how do you think a homeowner is going to basically renegotiate the car so it's facing, I guess, in this case, normal as he's bound or not?
Yeah, I mean, these were quick sketches, so up near the houses, you know, typical most houses like this with a longer driveway, they have some kind of bump out for a turnaround. You know, shorter driveways that are closer to the road, you can back, you can back out. This situation where the...
Oops, Michael, is your microphone on?
Yes, you can pull forward, you're going to get real close to your mic, thank you.
You know, they would definitely need some kind of turnaround.
It's going to need a turnaround, yeah.
You know, and it's typical for a residential driveway to have some kind of spot for a car to turn around.
Most people now have two or three cars anyway, so they would definitely need a turnaround or turn around. That happens on most driveways.
Otherwise, you have a long pullout into a stub road.
And I'm not committed to the exact size of the footprint of the house, even though that's, I think, 30 by 50. You know, the house may be 32 by 48, it might be 56 by 28, I'm not sure. And the driveway would more than likely be a curve, it probably wouldn't be straight-line drawings like this.
Okay, so this is dramatic, understood. And just one more question, the stub road, I'm sorry I missed last week's meeting, stub road is in existence already?
This stub road is in existence, the gray that's showing as that fire drive is continuous and blacked out right up to the sewer cap there.
Mr. Drowland, is your land, is it marshy at all? Is it moist? Is it wet? I'm just curious.
There are two.
Just curious.
Where he's pointing towards...
Okay.
The west end of the property, there's wetlands there.
Got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other than that, it's almost flat. Those are, you can't see the two-foot gradients, but there's not too many of them, so from the Empire Drive to the house on the bottom right is about eight foot and change of elevation, so it's very gradual.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think the next thing we've got to do is we got to call for a public hearing for this, right Laura?
A resolution for sketch plan approval and classification of a minor subdivision, if this is what you guys like. And then you could...
Call for the public hearing at the same time.
Call for a public hearing, yeah, you could do that.
All right, so is everybody okay with the sketch and going forward with, as shown? Obviously, there'll be some more details, but resolution approving sketch plan and calling for a public hearing at the next meeting? Anybody concerned with that, let's put it that way?
No concerns here. When do we make a secret determination, Laura?
So you have to make a secret determination when you call for the public hearing, actually, on this one.
Well, I would move, I would move for a negative deck.
Okay, so I'll put that tentatively in there. It'll have a chance to go to the CAC, I think, before the next meeting, so that should be fine, that'll work out if we want to put it in there like that.
All right.
That one little area where it's past the existing stub, but before the two split off, would that be an extension of the stub road or is that going to be up to the two homeowners?
I imagine it's going to be, it's not really written in stone, those driveways, so I can't tell where the divergence is with this 10-foot off of Empire Drive or if it's right at the Empire Drive or what, if that's what your question is, I think that's what you're asking.
That's what I'm trying to get to, yes.
It becomes private. So Ray caught me in the hall before we were going because I was curious about the cul-de-sac and this kind of shows snow storage on private property and he said essentially they won't push the snow onto the private property, they push it to the side, so they don't really truly go like all the way to the end of the stub road. They'll get sort of close and then push it to the side and then they just become driveways off the end like that. Because they're doing it in two places right now, St. Gerard and Vincenzo.
I remember Vincenzo.
Yeah.
Now, I'm just concerned if there's enough that the property owners can each claim have for, if there's going to be a point of contention over its care over the years and all of that stuff. Because then they come squabbling to the town and the town doesn't want to deal with it because they have no authority if it's private property.
Yeah, so maybe for clarification on the subdivision plat, like where the existing pavement ends, we could write end of public road or something like that, so that if somebody's looking at the subdivision in the future, it's there.
Okay.
All right. All right, so we have a resolution next meeting, sketch plan approval and calling for the public hearing then.
And secret determination.
And, well, get the feedback from the consti...
Yeah, pending that, yeah.
So those determinations would be made at the next meeting?
The, yeah.
And the public hearing would probably be at the following meeting?
Correct, yeah, so our next meeting is August 8th and do we have two meetings in August?
We have two meetings in August, but the second one got pushed to the very last week because of the second round of early voting.
Okay. It's on the calendar, so.
Yeah, Clark might have it in front of him, it's something like the 29th, though, it's like the very end of August.
Okay, so you can take a look at the calendar, but we'll see you at the next meeting anyway.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, and next we have a new subdivision and this is 2239 Van Antwerp Road and this is going to be again a two-lot subdivision, two acres property going to about a half an acre and one and a half acres. And I'm sorry, I forgot, Jane, could you state your name and who you were?
I'm Bob Woclo from Van Gelder Survey.
And you can just give us, give us an overview, we'd appreciate it. And Laura, you've got it pulled up already.
I'm here representing the applicant's Betsy and Joanne Ryan for the proposed two-lot Betsy wants to cut out her existing house lot, it's owned by her daughter, but she has a greater survivorship on the house and she just wants to cut off a building lot because she can't maintain all the property as it is now, so she wanted to subdivide it out. All the existing improvements would be on Lot 1, which is 24,000, little over 24,000 square feet and the new lot would be for our single-family residence, which ends up being about an acre and a half. The new lot will be connected to public water and public sewer is what we're going to try to do. The wetlands that are shown are Army Corps wetlands only. We looked at the environmental resource map, or there's no DC wetlands map for that area or in the vicinity. I did read on the comments that we'd have to put a 25, basically 25-foot no-cut buffer. We wouldn't have to plant anything, correct? Just...
No, you don't have to plant anything, but you'd have to pull your grading back away from that.
Yep, we could pull the grading back and probably even slide the house over to get even farther away. We just, for now, we just centered it on a lot. I wasn't aware of the 25-foot buffer. So that's pretty much the plan that's in front of you tonight.
So as, you know, you said you took a look at the agenda statement that was prepared by the planning department?
Yeah.
And the concerns that if this sewer is at the rear of the home, so you would have to go underneath the wetlands in order to tie in, is that correct?
Yeah, we could probably do directional bore to the manhole. There is, I don't know how well it shows up on the map, but there is a manhole just past the property line, which we'd create a sewer easement for Lot 2 to connect to the manhole, but that would have to be worked out with the, you know, sewer department, so.
And that would also require a permit from the Army Corps to do boring underneath the wetland?
I believe so, yes.
So you take care of any permits that would be required to be able to do that?
Yeah.
And if there was a concern, would the site be able to support septic?
I believe so, yeah, there's enough acreage on there. We did not do perk tests because we plan on going for the, you know, public sewer, but I think with the acreage that's there, I think we'd be able to work the, you know, a system in there.
Yeah, it'd be great if you could show where the, I guess, if you're going to a gravity feed to a manhole, because you could show where that would, the proximity of that?
Sure.
And whether it has to cross any other land or other easements required and able to get it there, it's important to know. But otherwise, I mean, the lots themselves are more than adequate per the standard. Is there any comments from the board on this one?
Just that I much prefer public sewer, so I hope that works out.
Yeah, I think that would be better. It'd be probably better for her and cheaper than doing a system as well. I mean, septic systems aren't cheap anymore, so.
Environmentally, it's the desirable route.
Especially if it's wet, you might end up with a raised bed or something back in there, which would be expensive, so. So, I mean, this is pretty much it. Anybody else have any thoughts? I mean, it's, I don't want to say it's straightforward because there's always concern when we do a subdivision, you know, it's right now, it's heavily, I guess you'd call it kind of scrubby wood, I don't know if it's with the quality of the forest there, but it's pretty, it's pretty dense right now, so it would be definitely a change over there. But if you could update that information, is there anything that would substantially change, Laura, on this one that we shouldn't call for resolution also in the public hearing? I don't know if that would be easier for the planning department, do we need to wait on this one?
It's a, I mean, I think it'd be fine to do, it's a resolution calling for a public hearing, yeah, so I think if you guys are comfortable with this, like he'll add the 25-foot buffer and show how he can connect into the sewer with elevation and stuff, but it's not going to change substantially if you're comfortable with...
And the CAC would also look at this up there next week.
And the CAC can also look at it, mm-hmm.
All right. Any concern from members of the board? It might be easier just to do them both together with the, you know, if you got a notice and everything in the paper too, you know? No, anybody?
You know, I would just like to, I guess, note that being, being that the area of disturbance appears to be uphill from some wetlands, we may be dealing with some added runoff. I, I don't know, I'd be curious to just, I'd like to just better understand a little if this proposed grading plan, you know, looks good to our engineering team, the engineering department, you know, I guess, just, I would like to, it looks like we've got a swale on the southern end of the parcel that would be directing water toward Van Antwerp Road, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
And then the same is true sort of on the north, on both sides, really.
Correct.
And there's, is there a catchment basin somewhere on Van Antwerp Road in that area?
I don't think there is in that area, no.
So where does that, do we know, is there, is there a swale along the road?
I think there's a slight swale along the road, yes.
Yeah, so Patrick, you bring up a really good point and actually I think Clark and I will follow up with the former applicant as well. We would need to know the acre of disturbance from the grading, we need to know that, to see if you just trigger like a soil erosion and sediment control plan or a SWIP, like my guess is on both of them that they're just soil erosion and sediment control plans, but sometimes because Niskuna soils are so poor, even on single-family homes, you're doing things like rain gardens and stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll follow up with the previous applicant on that too, Patrick, it's a really good point. But are the swales putting the water towards Van Antwerp or are they bringing it back to the back of the property towards the wetlands?
Yeah, I'm sorry, they're bringing it back towards the wetlands. It drops off towards the western side, so it's actually a swale that brings it gradually back towards the lower area in the wetlands.
Because there is a little bit of a swell along Van Antwerp, like closer to the intersection of Knott, but right there, it's pretty flat. So I guess the question is, you might even want to see if there's runoff from the road that would go on to the developed property that you would catch and bring into the back of the property, because I don't think there's any stormwater systems there, except for open drainage.
Yeah, we didn't locate any catch basins or storm drainage outwards to front.
So Van Antwerp's a really old road, it's got a funky right-of-way and it's a really old road. It's one of the first ones we ever had in Niskuna.
All right, but this doesn't change us going forward, it's engineering details. Yeah, it's like a 10-foot change from the proposed house to the, pretty much the start of the wetlands, right? 10 feet delta?
Yeah.
Any other comments or thoughts from the board on this one? Good-sized lot. And I think you're seeing your EAF. Yeah, your short EAF, I think you say no about wetlands on here. Does proposed action require permit? Yeah, we just have to check that.
Oh yeah, so it says the proportion of the site of the proposed action is contained in wetland, it says yes, but then like the proposed action gives the older proportion of any water bodies and it says no. I guess maybe make a note there that you may have to directly drill under the wetland to make it work.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't be any physical disturbance to the wetlands, I'm so...
If you go underneath it, I actually don't even think you need an RNC permit, but we can double-check on that.
Yeah, and I can double-check with, we have a wetland biologist that does our work and I can double-check with him to make sure.
We have to double-look at that question after you know the answer.
Yep. Okay.
And that would connect the Northwood Court, is that, that would be the plan B? If we don't connect to Van Antwerp, we sort of back into the subdivision behind.
So the sewer line is this line here and they'll need an easement from the proposed creation of the 2239 existing parcel, you'll need an easement to allow the lateral from the new lot to cross the 2239 parcel, but if you can connect to this sewer line here, it does run along the back of the...
Oh, from the back.
And it actually goes through Princeton Oaks. I don't think he'll be able to hit the Northwood Court one, it's a little too far away and that's all, that's all wetland. He's talking about crossing a little section of it and then tugging into this guy and then going to...
Yeah, on our plan, there's actually, you might not be able to see it, we do have a manhole located.
It's the little X guy right there.
Yep, right there. So we would be aiming for that manhole with the lateral. And it's quite an elevation change down to there, so that would probably be the best option.
Okay, our engineering department doesn't allow direct ties into manholes, though, it'd have to be like just a little bit.
In the line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thanks Laura. Any other comments from the board? All right, just like the last applicant, we'll send that on to the CAC, we'll prepare a resolution and for sketch plan approval based on comments from the CAC and call for the public hearing also.
Okay.
So the public hearing itself would be the end of August, whatever, 29th, whatever, it's August 29th?
29th.
Okay, anything else? Anything? Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, that's it for discussion items tonight, we've got a short agenda, so we'll move right to reports. We'll start with Laura or Clark, you have anything that'd like to update us on?
Just the childcare for the 18, is it 1850 Union Street, I think, is at Town Board tomorrow night for a public hearing and potential action, so we'll see what they say after that. We didn't get any comments at our public hearing and ours is a little bit more invasive to people because we actually mail the surrounding residents, but we'll see, so that's on the Town Board for tomorrow. And then pending that result, they would probably come back at the next meeting. And then the gas station, I know they had, were very interested in the date, but they did request to go to the next meeting because they're working on some stuff and we're double-checking all the codes and things like that. So you'll probably see 1850 Union and the gas station at the next meeting. Rivers Ledge wasn't on the zoning board meeting for this month because like they had said they wanted their appeal, so they're not going to be on. The zoning board meeting also gets kicked a week out because of that early, second round of preliminary voting, so yeah, so that's going to be the very end of August before you hear anything about that as well.
Okay. Can I ask about any of the legal actions that are in court, especially the Miller Brothers? We've heard anything at all about this?
We're awaiting court's decision on that.
So waiting court, okay. All right, all right, then we'll just move to commission business, you have any questions for Laura, you can do it then, I guess. Mr. Darpeno, have anything for us tonight?
Just to mention that the comprehensive planning committee had their first meeting last week and got some good members and it was a good kickoff meeting, Ms. Gold was there in attendance.
Fantastic.
Looking forward to a pretty active year.
Great, thank you for doing that. Ms. Gold?
No, nothing really, this meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Scrubby... Yeah, Mr. Scrappy Tennis? Ms. Strang?
No, certainly.
No, and Mr. McPartlin?
I was, uh, curious to hear any, anything new on the, um, Hatchet Hardware. We saw a site plan application for some added storage, um, last year, and I don't recall that ever got approved. Um, so I was curious if whatever happened to that application?
I'll have to check, I do remember that, um, because we were trying to decide if we could tuck it against the building with the grades and all that stuff. I'll have to check on the storage, um, they have been working, the greenhouse was delayed, I think you guys probably remember that, because during COVID, I guess you couldn't order glass very well, so, I mean, the, the greenhouse was delayed. Then the sidewalk to the greenhouse was delayed, but they've got a lot of the main components of the original site plan installed, and they're now working on the landscaping. So the tree council met with the landscapers like last week, I think, um, to finalize which trees were coming down and which trees were gonna get trimmed, and then they're doing something like a thirty thousand dollars of landscaping install. But I, I agree with you, I don't actually remember the resolution for the storage shed, so unless Clark remembers that, I'll have to look it up for you.
The way, the way I remember it, the, the planning board asked them to put it up by the building, and then they asked them to move it a little bit, and I think they did that in the site plan, and I believe it was approved. But I don't think they've ever built it.
Okay.
That's the way I remember it, though. I remember Jangus asking, um, could they put it up, keep it up by the building so it doesn't stand out as another big obstruction? And then, um, I believe they did put it on the site plan, and I think it got approved, but we can double-check everything.
And I think they were doing some improvements to the parking area, like signage and all.
Yeah, they're supposed to re- because we, we discussed all of that when we were discussing the accessory structure. The bump, and then the restriping and stuff, but I-
Bump's still there.
They're still working sort of on the original stuff, which was the landscaping and things that, because the planning board and the tree council really wanted, that site had been kind of not tended well for quite a while. So, um, the tree council was working with them on the updated landscaping, but yeah, maybe we could ping them and be like, okay, your landscaping's going in now, how about the next round of approvals that you got from the planning board? With the, it was the parking lot and the storage, yeah.
Well, it's come a long way from the vacant professional office building, that's for sure.
Yep.
It's a functional business.
Yeah, it seems like it's going okay, and haven't heard any complaints at the access road, right, so some things have been going pretty good.
I haven't heard any complaints from residents, the Ace Hardware people feel like there's not, there's still not a whole lot of visibility from Balltown Road, which I think they're hoping if they do the landscaping, that might help the visibility a little bit. Um, but he also said that they were having, they have more customers than they originally anticipated, so.
Great, I've been over.
Yeah, I go there all the time.
Okay.
Unless I want to drive to Burn Hills, that's my option.
All right.
But you have to go through the traffic circle.
All right, so I have, um, under commission business, I have nothing, except for we could use a project lead for the, um, Union Street Corner, Union of Van Antwerp, uh, convenience store, you know, when they come back with, uh, uh, next time, that would be helpful.
I'd be happy to volunteer on that.
Sure. Okay, David, thank you. All right, and that's pretty much it, uh, unless anybody, anybody has anything else? Not, uh-
Regarding that application by the, uh, Union Street, uh, gas station, seventeen forty-seven Union Street, I, I wasn't sure if it'd be more appropriate to wait, but I, I was thinking any addition might be nice to have some, um, architectural review board, um, input. I don't know if we discussed that before, but, uh, David, perhaps you can let somebody on the architectural review board have a look, like yourself.
Yeah, definitely, we would have, uh, Clark refer that project, and then we would get it on to the next meeting. Probably, once they go through site plan, they may include some elevations, and from there, we could have them take a look.
Yeah, we act, they actually did, David, I haven't written up the meeting from last Wednesday yet for the, the twentieth, but they did take a look at it, and they had a rendering in their drawing, and they're matching the existing building, so we can run it by them again, but the, the ARB was, was, um, they essentially approved what, what they were doing, or felt good about it.
Oh, good.
We can run it past them again.
All right, thank you.
There'll be more from you.
If we're talking about the gas station, when Clark and I were diving into the code, though, um, there's a twenty-five percent area increase on the, on the site.
Yep.
And because the square footage is higher, um, I do think that we landed on denying them, and so their next step is a recommendation to the ZBA for going over the twenty-five percent increase of the property.
If they decide to go over the twenty-five percent, we haven't heard back from them, right, or?
I think, actually, on Friday, they said that they really need the extra space, and they would like the denial.
Because, is it just CBA, or is that any town board action if they go over the twenty-five percent?
So a lot of times, um, there is a little bit, there's kind of choose-your-own-adventure in our code, um, you can really do it either way. Um, because you, you could get relief from the twenty-five percent as an area variance, or you could get a brand-new special use permit. Um, but I think in this, and so it's kind of a, a lot of times with signs, like, they can bring the signs to the planning board for a site plan application, which is two hundred dollars. Or they can appeal to the zoning board, which is only a hundred, or maybe it's two hundred dollars too, but it's like a different timeline, because they can actually get relief from the cold either way, so sometimes pe- people actually have a choice of how they want to move their projects through. Um, and I believe, Clark can correct me if I'm wrong, that we gave them a choice, and that they wanted to go to the zoning board.
Hmm.
Okay, I actually hadn't heard that they had made that decision, so.
Yeah, because I think they did it late, late Friday, I have to double-check my email, but I do think that they decided they wanted to go.
Okay.
All right, I know that'll impact their timeline, of course, you don't need a recommendation, and, um, because if they go less than twenty-five percent, they, twenty-five percent or less, they can keep it moving quickly.
Clark definitely explained that to them. Couple times.
And just while we're talking about that project, the police did respond, we put it out to the police and fire department, and they, they asked if any of the entrances or exits would be altered. So I said, as of right now, no, but that is something the planning board asked them to look at, the magic number is they need to get to ten parking spaces, if they go to the thirty-three percent increase, so we'll, we'll see what the next site plan shows.
Yep, thank you, Clark. All right, uh, not, anything else? Now, a motion to adjourn?
To move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Scrappy Tennis, have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Strang, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody, have a great night.